Everybody, welcome to the November 12th, the Tuesday edition of the board meeting. All members are present. We've just adjourned from an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to the International Association of Firefighters Local 1370 in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 3. Would you kindly join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you all for joining us Tuesday evening. In honor of Veterans Day, we were off wonderful Veterans Day ceremony as usual put on by our Veteran Service Office. So thank you to them and thank you to all of our veterans who have served. With that, we'll begin this evening with transmitting of Treasury warrants. We have Treasury warrants 2518, 2518T, 2519, 2519W, 2519T, and 2519S. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second. And any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Mr. Slagel?
Yes. Treasury warrant 2518W. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to prove?
Motion made?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Four zero. One abstention.
Thank you very much. Mr. Slagel, item number three is approval of minutes. We have minutes from October 28, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And is there any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. As regards to an earth removal permit for 11 Commonwealth Avenue, Mr. Newhouse?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mrs. Snarren. Good evening to you.
Do we need to open the public hearing?
Yes, I just want to first welcome our guests. Thank you. Yep, no problem. Good evening to you both. And with that, as Mr. West mentioned, we will call for the public hearing to be officially opened. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing? It is unanimous, and we are now open. With that, I want to welcome you both again. And the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Michael Newhouse. I'm counsel for the applicant, S&amp;K Associates LLC. The applicant is the owner of the property known as 11 Commonwealth Ave. Joined this evening by Jacqueline Welch. Jacqueline is business associate of Michael Welch, who's my client's general contractor. And Mr. Welch and Jackie will be doing the construction at 11 Commonwealth Ave. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you'll be reminded, and folks who may be watching or in attendance, should know that there is a fairly unique process in the town of Wilmington referring to the official map. So when a lot meets all zoning requirements for the purposes of obtaining a building permit to build, in this case, a single-family home, if it's not, if the property doesn't front on a street that has either been developed through the subdivision control process, or laid out by the town, or appear on the official map, the town requires the applicant to go through a road improvement plan, and that process is a rigorous process through the planning board and includes the recommendations and input of a variety of administrative officials. As part of the 81G approval that this project has actually received on two different occasions, the applicant has secured a roadway improvement plan and has other preliminary permits in hand, including the one that is necessary from the Board of Appeals for such cases. And one of the conditions of the roadway improvement plan is that if there is more than the threshold requirement of, I believe, 450 cubic yards of material that would be taken from the site as part of the development, that as a condition of that roadway improvement plan and that approval, we would appear before the Board of Selectmen in order to get a very specific permit to remove those earth materials. So that's what brings us before the board this evening. The amount of fill material that would have to be removed in order to develop the site in accordance with all of the permits I described just a minute ago, it's pretty limited, and it's about 750 cubic yards of materials. So those materials essentially need to be taken away from the site in order for the site to be developed in accordance with all the conditions that have been approved by the planning board and others, including things like stormwater management and the system that's been designed and reviewed by the engineering department. So again, this is a very specific approval that satisfies one condition of an otherwise comprehensive kind of permit that is issued by the planning board. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board has, though I probably should also point out to folks who are in attendance especially, that this earth removal permit itself has been reviewed by the town administration, and the engineering department has made a number of recommendations in order to make sure that the applicant complies with all of the required steps and does things essentially to protect the streets of Wilmington when these materials are exported. And we have no objection to any of the conditions that are recommended by the town engineer.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Slagel, we do have positive recommendations from DPW, Public Buildings, excuse me, Building Inspector and Health Director?
Yes, we actually have four positive recommendations. We have one from the Director of Planning and Conservation, Valerie Gingrich. The project located at 11 Commonwealth Ave received planning board approval in 2022 for the extension of Commonwealth Avenue, and the construction of a single-family home is shown on the plan entitled Commonwealth Avenue in Wilmington, Massachusetts, dated November 10, 2021. During the planning board process, the applicant brought fill material into the site and was required to confirm that the fill material did not alter the drainage patterns, would not adversely affect abutting properties, and the applicant's engineer, Doug Lee, has confirmed. It appears this fill material is now proposed to be removed through this earth removal permit. As such, the granting of this permit is recommended from Ms. Gingrich. We also have a note from the Inspector of Buildings, Al Spalding. This building inspector is approving the application for permit to remove earth products within the town of Wilmington, submitted by Michael J. Newhouse Esquire on behalf of S&amp;K Associates. We have a positive recommendation from the Health Department, from Shelley Newhouse, Director. The Health Department recommends approval of the earth removal permit. And then we have a very comprehensive approval, recommendation of approval from Paul Looney, the town engineer, that does include approximately 14 separate conditions. If you'd like me to check, I can read those conditions into the record, or we can refer to the decision of the engineer?
I think everyone received this in advance?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I have one question.
Sure, Mr. DePalma.
Thank you, Mr. Newhouse. Are these, is this material being removed from the town also, or do you have a place where you're going to be dumping?
In all likelihood, the fill materials would be removed from the town. Any loom that's scraped off the top would stay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DePalma. Any further questions? Mr. West?
Is there an existing house on the property, or what's the existing, what's existing now there today?
There's not a house existing at 11 Commonwealth. The roadway improvement plan that was approved by the planning board includes a cul-de-sac that cuts into 8 Commonwealth, and at 8 Commonwealth there is an existing home. So it's for that reason that, you know, folks that were within a certain proximity even to 8 Commonwealth were notified of this hearing.
Yeah, because I see that it's some sort of notification in here that, from the owner of 8 Commonwealth, that says that you can access his property and I guess you're doing, it sounds like you may be taking some of his property for the cul-de-sac?
Correct. That particular property owner consented to an easement to create a turnaround, which was a condition that the turnaround that is shown in the plans that were approved was based on recommendations and requests from the Wilmington Fire Department.
Okay. And it sounds like you started this process in 2022. There was approval originally? That evidently the approval lapsed, and then you went to the planning board in May of '24 and got approval in July?
That sequence is accurate. Those dates sound right.
Okay, I'm just going by Valerie's.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. So the planning board approved it. Did it require Board of Appeals at all?
It did require Board of Appeals. Well, actually, two different Board of Appeals votes. One Board of Appeals vote related specifically to 11 Commonwealth Ave, and that confirmed that it is an appropriate site for a single-family dwelling. And then as part of the official map process, there's actually a two-track process. One requires a plan to be approved by the planning board, which is where the lion's share of the engineering work is done. The Board of Appeals also has to take a vote to issue what they refer to as a variance from the official map, which in this case was consistent with every case that I'm familiar with in town. And it included as a condition of that vote that the 81G plan would be approved by the planning board.
Okay, so it sounds like today, it sounds like Commonwealth Ave is a dead end, and then you're with the existence, with the approval of this house, it's going to be turned into a cul-de-sac.
I think that's fair to say. Sure, yeah. It's harder to define exactly what's there now, but certainly, an improved paved cul-de-sac at the end of the street, that is what will be the result.
Yeah. So like, in other words, if a fire truck, for example, came down, it would be easy to turn around, obviously, in the cul-de-sac, then the conditions that are there today, if you will.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? All right. This is a public hearing, so if anybody from the public would like to be heard on this particular issue, please rise, and if you're able.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure. Sir, if you don't mind, just coming to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record, please.
Doug Olson at 15 Loy Road.
So like, I have bought 8 Commonwealth. So as you said, it sounds like the cul-de-sac goes into 8's property, but also on the diagrams is a pond, an existing septic system potentially moved or something. So I don't know if you can speak to those?
Sure.
There's more work being done than what you've mentioned.
Okay, yeah, certainly, that is absolutely the case. The stormwater management system or drainage system that's been designed for the project and which is the subject of a specific process, again, through the planning department in conjunction with the town engineer, who conduct a very thorough review of a stormwater analysis that's generated by the applicant. And in this case, in conjunction with that cul-de-sac, there are drainage or detention areas that are on 8 Commonwealth Avenue that are on the plans that we submitted. And certainly, the property owner at 8 has assented to that as well. That was all part of the process in going through the planning board that we secured that agreement.
So does 8 own those now? Or so 8 would own one of those ponds? And he keeps that land, or does that land go over to who is over at 11 owns that land?
Yeah, that's a great question. The ownership of that area will continue to be under the owners of 8 Commonwealth, but as part of the planning board approval process and decision, the owner of 11 Commonwealth, the end, you know, after the house is built, marketed, sold, there are covenants with that property that will ensure that that property owner is responsible for the maintenance of those detention basins. As an additional belt and suspenders kind of thing, the town of Wilmington also is a grantee of an easement so that if, for whatever reason, the owner of 11 Commonwealth doesn't own up to those responsibilities, then the town is protected and can take some action and then seek recourse with the 11 Commonwealth's owner. So it's kind of a two-level safety net to make sure that the system is maintained the way that it's designed to be maintained.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this particular issue? Okay. All right. With that, then, before we take the vote, we will, let's vote to close the public hearing. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? It is unanimous. The public hearing is now closed. With that, would anyone like to?
To make a motion to accept the earth removal permit for 11 Commonwealth?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Manager?
I was just saying, subject to the conditions laid out in the engineer's memorandum.
Subject to the conditions laid out by the engineer.
Thank you. Still seconded?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a second public hearing this evening. It is with Alex Dos Santos Evers. This is a public hearing on the application to transfer an all-alcohol license of C&amp;C Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Rocco's Restaurant, Rocco's Restaurant and Bar LLC, DBA, Rocco's Restaurant and Bar, for the property located at 193 Main Street. Before we open the public hearing, sir, if you don't mind, just identifying yourself, please.
My name is Alex Evers. I've been living in America for the past 5, 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Before you go any further, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm just going to call for a motion to open this public hearing.
Make a motion to open. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. West. All those in favor? The public hearing is now open. And sir, again, good evening.
So thanks for having me here. So my name is Alex Evers. I've been working restaurant for the past 25 years. So I was working Back Bay Group for 25, 20 years. The past five years, I was express pizza in Art Bilarrica. So I have a great chance to get like my dream ready. So I saw the history about Rocco's, and I decided to get the place. So I have my cousin behind me. He's going to help me. And also, I bring one of those big support from the Back Bay Group. He's a Chris. He's the big GM for the Back Bay Group in Boston. So that's those guys are going to help me with this place. So that's one of the reasons I'm here, to take over the rocks and make sure you guys have a better quality, like a breakfast in the morning here. And I'm a chef beside them, bartender and the manager. So I think I have a lot of skills to run this place and make sure your city have the best food around here.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board members?
Question on the hours of operation?
So basically, the place right now, they open noon and they close at nine. I just think the hours, they don't help the business. I'm a chef. I'm going to open the place for the breakfast. So the time I want to close at mid or night because I like games. And I don't think no one want to go to rocks at eight o'clock, and that the Celtics are going to play eight o'clock, and that they're going to leave. So the hours is like a middle night, but I'm not sure if we're going to stay up that late.
Sure.
But I want to make sure the city have like a place to go when people want to have some, you know, kill some time. If they close like a middle night, I think it's a good time. But I don't think I'm going to keep that late. I just want to make sure we're able to run the business.
And you're going to have a full menu.
Full menu. So basically, after 10 o'clock, I'm going to have like a late menu, maybe like burgers or pizza, because already I run a pizza store in Bilarrica.
Yeah.
For the past years, for the past five years. So basically, the menu is going to be the same. I'm going to see the cost on the menus, because that's why I bring this guy here, my GM. And he knows everything about the numbers. We're going to put it more quality. But the menu's going to be the same. I'm going to adjust because I'm a chef. I want to put something I like, and I hope you guys go there and enjoy what I'm going to make for you.
Yeah.
I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Mr. DePalma, Mrs. Misselli?
Good evening. This is great news. I know I'm looking forward to, I personally think there's improvement to be made at this establishment, so both with its management as well as the food. So I'm not obviously being shy about saying that, but I have not frequented that restaurant in a long time for many reasons. So I'm very excited.
So basically, I make a lot of certs. And like I said, the place, they have a beautiful story. I believe all you guys grew up in this place, and no one in this place was there for how long is there? I just think the places, they don't have like a face, look like something's dead. And that's my dream. And I spoke to some people, and they told me everything about the place. I know the place can be fixed. And like I said, I've been preparing myself for 20 years.
Yeah.
To something like that. And beside that, I'm bringing someone, teach me almost the thing I know. And the guy knew everything about that. So all these things we bring, we bring from Boston. So the place I worked for 20 years, they have about like 70 places.
Yeah.
It's a big company, so they know what they do. And I want to show you guys, we can do something better for the town.
And if everything gets approved and stuff, when would you take over operations?
So basically, what happened, I just wait for the liquor lines to be improved. I already have all the food permits already. So I heard a lot of things about this place, and I don't want to put my face with the place right now. And soon you guys let me start doing my job, I'm going to start making my change. So I was there like a few times.
Mm-hmm.
And I see how they run the business. I don't think the concept they have, the concept I'm going to put in there is the same. That's why I bring my own team.
Yeah.
I'm not saying I'm going to let everybody go.
No, no, no.
But I want to make sure everybody, I'm going to give the change so we can hire more people from the town to work for us.
That's wonderful.
And I believe the concept I have, we're going to, I'm going to bring this to you. So the quality of food, the concept, the pretty much everything I learned in Boston, I'm going to bring here.
Great. Well, sounds good to me.
So soon you guys prove, I'm going to put my face there. I just don't want to put it there yet.
No, that's understandable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. West?
Thank you. First, welcome to Wilmington. I wish you a lot of success. Hopefully, the board will be favorable to the permit. Just a quick question. It sounds like you're buying the business but not the real estate. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes. I just bought the business. The location's going to be rent.
Okay. So the building itself, you won't have any marked changes to the actual structure? It sounds like you may be doing some internal configurations?
So one of those things I plan to change in the future is the sign. I just, I think the sign, they don't, it's not very welcome. I'm going to keep the name, but I'm going to put it like a new face. Maybe I put something with more color, you know what I mean, there? And we have a plan already how we're going to start doing. But first of all, I have to be there and see what kind of people go in there. And after, we're going to come out with a plan to make sure. I believe some people, they're going to stop go there because already some people start to leave the place, because I have my own concept. And everything they do in there is not something I agree. So I'm not going to be against them. But what I'm going to bring to the town is more quality, and I believe everybody's going to love this place. When I took the place in Bilarrica, was that place. But now I have six people working there. I don't have to be all the time. But my dream is to get a restaurant since I moved here. It's a big change, you know what I mean? And I think you guys are going to win a lot with me here because I'm going to bring everything to the town, because I've been searched a lot of towns, and because my store is close to here. I heard, I like the schools, the city. Something with Bilarrica is very beautiful town. The people in there is very welcome. And I decided to put my foot here. So.
And excuse me for interrupting, but your hours again are, your proposed hours?
So it's seven?
Seven in the morning?
Yes, to mid or night.
To midnight. Okay. And you're thinking that you're probably not going to run through midnight, but?
No. I just want to make sure if, because right now, when people go there, like, when people are going to watch something, like eight o'clock, no one go there anymore, because they know all the people working there. They want people to leave before nine, because they want to close. You know what I mean? I just want to figure out like a place when people, they go there and they enjoy, and they don't have to concern too much about the time they're going to leave. Of course, they're going to leave before mid or night.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure people, they don't feel trapped, like they're like eight, and they have to eat fast to leave. I just like, I want people to have like a good experience in there. Eat the food, enjoy the food, enjoy the time, the environment. That's what I want. I don't want to rush people. Because one of those things, I believe as a chef, when people go to eat, you leave your house and you go to something to eat, something I make. When you're a good chef or you're a good bartender, that's, it's not price for that. Because for my whole life, I've been a chef, I've been a cook, I've been making pizza, I work 80 hours a week. It's not because I need the money, because if I want just the money, I work in my pizza store. I just want to, the fact people, they go to eat something I make, something I create, that's the pride right now.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes, Mr. Bendel. If you think Bilarrica's a welcoming town, wait until you get to Wilmington. Boy, we're going to be.
That's my biggest step was here.
We'll be in that restaurant all the time.
Yeah.
Please, that's what I want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just one more. Could you clarify the current place in Bilarrica, the pizza place was?
My store is, they call Express Pizza.
Express Pizza, okay.
131 Boston Road.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. This is a public hearing, and anybody from the public like to be heard on this particular issue? All right. Hearing none. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. I have a suggestion in form of a motion that's been provided, so we'll make sure we do this correctly. If somebody would be so willing to make a motion to approve the application for the transfer of the all-alcohol license of C&amp;C Restaurant Group LLC, DBA, Rocco's Restaurant, to Rocco Restaurant and Bar, LLC, DBA, Rocco's Restaurant and Bar, located at 193 Main Street, and further, that determination is made that the license is not detrimental to the educational activities of the Learning Express, which is located at 220R Main Street.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Misselli. Any questions, comments?
Looking forward to it.
Discussion? Best of luck. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, so thank you very much.
Welcome to Wilmington.
Welcome. Best of luck. We look forward to seeing you around.
Yeah. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Oh, yeah. You want to check in with Beverly?
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Best of luck.
All righty.
All set, Beth?
I think I'm on there.
Yeah.
I'll be very excited.
All right.
Yeah. Thrilled, thrilled.
All right. Next up, we have Communications. Mr. Slagel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a communication for myself to the Wilmington Select Board regarding the Town Clerk's Office election recap. I thought, given that, as somebody mentioned earlier, hard to believe it's only been a week, but a week ago, we had a successful election here in town. And I wanted to just kind of lay out for both the board and the public, the efforts kind of encapsulated of the Clerk's Office over the last month or so to support this election. So we did two weeks plus two full Saturdays of early voting here at Town Hall. In addition, the clerk and her staff were here for Saturday and Sunday before the election to process the early voting ballots and mail-in ballots. And they conducted the full election on November 7. The town had 41% of registered voters that participated in mail-in early voting, which I thought was an astounding number.
That was amazing.
And then 35% of voters turned out on Election Day proper at the various districts. We had a total of 76% of the vote. So if you, if you wanted to see which precinct won, you can check the spreadsheet on page two. So Precinct 6, actually, had 79% of their, of their registered voters turn out for the election. So I just thought it was important to share with the public this information about the incredible volume of work that the Town Clerk's Office has put in over the last month or so.
Yeah, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't take this opportunity to thank them, you know, specifically Beth Laurenson, but her whole staff and the team of people. I mean, I know you mentioned the last couple weeks, but really, they've been preparing for this for more than a year now.
Yeah.
Maybe more. I could be wrong. But through trainings and preparation and trial runs and just a lot of effort. And obviously, it's no secret, obviously, this was a contentious election, but our staff did an unbelievable job making sure that it was fair for everyone.
but our staff did an unbelievable job making sure that it was fair for everyone. So really grateful for the staff and the Clerk's Office and anybody who participated in making this election happen for us here, so.
A lot of volunteers, yeah.
And a lot of volunteers as well, yeah, absolutely. There was a lot, there's a lot that goes into this.
Yeah, yeah.
Question, but it's nice that all, so many people turned out for it. And it wasn't all, all for naught.
Yeah, absolutely.
Efforts paid off.
Beth and Claire and Megan and her staff did a phenomenal job handling the questions and concerns from the public, doing the trainings for all the election workers and being here, you know, evenings and weekends for a long time. I also want to give a shout out to Beverly and Tommy from the manager's office, who volunteered on Election Day. And after, after work, they walked right over to the election and volunteered for the rest of the evening, working on the election. So I want to give a shout out to them too. So lots of great volunteers that helped us, helped us go off without a hitch.
Thank you very much.
The second communication, Mr. Chair, is a
Bless you.
A letter from the Historical Commission regarding a request that the Select Board amend the town bylaws to include appropriate demolition delay protections. As you can see in the memorandum, the Historic Commission has been, over the last several months, reviewing the processes within the town with the hopes that coming up at the annual town meeting in the spring, the Select Board would consent to allowing them or working with them on a bylaw which would put in some demolition delay protections for historic properties in Wilmington that we currently don't have on the books.
So this memo is just to notify us, obviously, there's no action being taken here this evening. But so that members know. And you want to recognize that I won't put you on the spot, but I will. Some members are here this evening. Certainly appreciate your efforts.
Mr. Chairman? I was just wondering, what is the process either if the town, if the Select Board wanted to take, take this on or the Historical Commission wanted to take this on as an action?
Yeah, so it would be the same process as always if a particular, if the board wanted to put together a warrant article like we do oftentimes, like we have several coming up in December, as you know. But also, residents are free to come forward with a petition, get their appropriate number of signatures and they could have, if they met the certain timelines, deadlines, then they would be able to be on the warrant as well. So there's a couple of different avenues and we've seen them all, as you know. Sometimes things come through this board and other times, we have items taken up through resident petition. Thank you. Well, you did spend all the time writing this letter, so I will acknowledge it. But I would just kindly ask if you move to the microphone. And we know who you are, but if you don't mind identifying yourself for the record, please.
The request in the memo was specifically for the Select Board to do the authoring through the assistance of the Town Council, given that our neighboring communities, who also retain the same services, have already gone through the language that is most appropriate for a town such as ours. And the hope is that it would be agreeable to the town to vote for it in the spring.
Right. And so my, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, for being here. But my only initial reaction would that be, would just be to be completely upfront in my short time here, that we've seen it both ways, right? A lot of folks come forward and would love for the, this board to sponsor their article to be on the, and sometimes we've done that, other times we have not. So just wanted to be clear about that upfront.
If desired, we're open to taking existing bylaws in our neighboring towns and using that as a template to submit. If that's better for us to take it, we're open to that. But we're looking for your recommendation as you already have communication with Town Council.
Appreciate that. Yeah, and so this is our first notification of this. I myself, certainly not prepared to make a final determination yet. I'm still gonna do my own research and look forward to learning more about it. But others are, if anybody has any initial reaction? Sounds like a
Need to look at it for sure.
Yeah, sounds like we may be talking more about it in the future.
If, if desired, I could present materials in support of what we think would be appropriate. And we'll respond to any invitation to that end.
Yep, and so, you know, you having been through this process before and attended town meeting in the past, you know that we'll be putting together a warrant, you know, in the early spring. And so certainly, I'm sure there'll be further discussion.
Very good, thanks.
All right, Mr. Jackson, thanks for being here. Okay. Thank you for that. We have only one board to consider item, Mr. Slagel.
Mr. Chair, number six. A board to consider request of Lisa Seer, President Wilmington High School Lacrosse Boosters, to conduct a fundraising car wash at the Fourth of July Building on Sunday, May 18th, 2025, from nine o'clock AM to 12 noon.
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Mr. DePalma. Motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Misselli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Do you have a?
No, I'm gonna wait till after the vote.
Okay. The vote is unanimous? Something to add?
Yeah, no, just, I'd like to have a discussion on where we're going to be allowing these car washes. We're gonna be at the, I know the new town hall will be built, but I'm concerned about space. And it seems like it was working very well down at the buildings, Department Building, just down the street. It seemed like people were comfortable down there when they were using it. And I just thought maybe it would be a better, better location where we just keep it there, where it's worked and we're not clogging the parking lot at all with these car washes if there's another event gonna happen there or there's something going on with the town hall on a Saturday. It's something that I think we should at least consider.
Yeah, fair enough. So, Mr. Slagel, maybe you could get some more thoughts on that together for us and we can talk about it in the near future?
Absolutely.
Does that suffice?
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have public comments. Would anyone like to be heard? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Would you kindly
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin McDonald. Can you let us know what the total warrants were for tonight?
Mr. Slagel?
Sure. The total amounts of the warrants for tonight was $10 million, 91,139 and 37 cents.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I put in a public record request for a copy of some warrants. And one of the things that concerned me was that all the warrants, the departments are kind of mishmashed together in multiple warrants. And I was thinking about that and I was thinking that the town meeting budget is broken down by departments. And I would like to have this board consider structuring the warrants differently so that the warrants are by department, so that you can go by and go down each department. And I guess first and foremost, a department's limited to a budget at town meeting. And so it's very difficult to actually reconcile a mishmashed warrant when all the departments are put together. So that was my observation on that. I also put in a public record request for bank balances. And I actually have some of them here tonight. And I have some questions on that. But I think I'll just start with Mr. West. I'll have you pass it down and have you, each of you take a look at it. You'll notice on that document that there are some banks that the town no longer has balances with. And so I put in my public record request to ask what the balances were on those banks. And a couple of, a few of the banks that we had very large sums of money with are Belmont Savings Bank, which was $6.7 million. Newburyport Five Cent Savings Bank, $2.5 million. People's United Bank, we had over $2 million. And so my question is, where did that money go? They couldn't answer me that question. And I'll actually pass it down, this bank balance. Mr. West, you could pass it around. So I would just like to see the board get some answers for the town as to where these monies have gone to, if they would deposit into another bank, so we could have some, some eyes on that, that issue. Mr. Bendel, this week I sent you an email. And the email was to request an article on this agenda. And can you clarify something? It's my understanding that agendas have to be posted 48 hours before the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Forty-eight business hours.
Correct.
Forty-eight business hours. So I guess the problem with my request is the 48 hours didn't comply with the business hours. It was in excess of 48 hours, but it wasn't business days? Is that, is that the issue?
Correct. Yesterday was a holiday, correct.
So basically, I just wanted to explain to you, to the rest of the board, what I was seeking to do and I was hoping to have it on the next meeting agenda. So I'm looking to have a, call a special town meeting. To avoid that, I was hoping the selectmen would actually vote to put this article on the special town meeting to avoid that. But I'll just read, read a letter that I wrote to the state legislator. Basically says, Dear Massachusetts House and Senate Members, I am writing to inform you of my desire to try to address part of the housing crisis in Massachusetts. As you know, there are widespread shortages of affordable housing. The MBTA overlay district that many towns have a problem with tries to address the crisis, but fails woefully short, due in part to towns strategizing to find ways to meet the law and at the same time, throwing a monkey wrench into the works to minimize the possibility of development. I am reaching out to you for your help in aiding me in my effort to help with a real legitimate and high probability plan to provide affordable senior housing. Many seniors have expressed a desire to downsize and go into affordable senior housing. As you know, new construction costs astronomically exceed the cost of homes that were built 50 years ago or more. It is my belief that many houses could be freed up for families in need if we could develop senior housing. It is my desire to call a special town meeting in the town of Wilmington for the purpose of putting an article on the warrant to petition the state legislature for a home rule petition that exempts the town of Wilmington from the current MBTA overlay district mandate. It is my desire for a special legislative act allowing the town to be able to overlay its chosen town-owned property with a district similar to the MBTA overlay district, provided that it is not on, not in a groundwater protection district. I would be asking for the legislature to grant this special act contingent on the town of Wilmington, zoning its town-owned property for 1,248 affordable senior housing units or a combination of affordable senior housing units plus total bedrooms of housing being vacated by seniors who would be going into senior housing units, where the combined totaled would be 1,248 units of bedrooms. So I sent that to some of our legislators and senators. And I was actually hoping that this board would show some responsibility and care for our seniors in town by actually taking the time to put an agenda item on the next meeting and put an article on that special time meeting. As the previous meeting, I asked any of you, if you, if any one is you, if any one of you have put forth an initiative or an article for senior housing and it was just crickets, nobody here stood up or voiced their affirmation that they did anything for that.
Excuse me, I'm just gonna interrupt you really quickly, just as a friendly reminder. This isn't a Q and A session, but an opportunity for you to provide your feedback. So if people don't respond, it's not that they don't care. It's just that this is not the portion of the meeting in which we do that.
Okay. Well, my personal opinion is that if you did care, you would have did, you would have done something by now. So obviously, that's not a high priority item for you or even an item of interest to you at all. We basically, I have in seniors being forced out of town, we're building a $14 million senior center that some of those seniors won't even be able to enjoy. And so I think it's about time that we do something to help our seniors. That document that you just saw going by shows some astronomical bank balances. And I think it's about time we do something to, to help our seniors. Getting back to the letter that I wrote, the 1,248 units that you heard me mention was equal to the MBTA housing units that are, were mandated to, to provide. And so
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, so
Just gonna see if anybody else would like to be heard? A public comment? Okay, if not, we're gonna move on.
So I'd just like to get that document back that I showed you.
Sure. Thank you for your feedback. Okay, next up is announcements. Would anybody like to offer some announcements?
Mr. Jim?
Mr. West?
As you mentioned earlier, as far as Veterans Day goes, it was fantastic weather. I think the weather gods were on our side that day. And the turnout was phenomenal, both from the veterans and the general public giving appreciation to the veterans. So probably a big shout out to everybody, all the departments, everybody involved in that. Question. Now, I know the, the board, when we had Valerie here a few weeks ago, we talked about the MBTA 3A Act. And individuals of the board mentioned that our disapproval of this going into town meeting. So I didn't know if, as a board, if we wanted to put out a stance that, you know, because I know like the Finance Committee will make a recommendation and the Planning Board will make a recommendation. Should the board, should the Select Board, as a board, give a consensus whether we want it or not? I'm just thinking, I don't know if we could put that in our next meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a good question. I can only recall a few other times that maybe we did something like that. I believe the board did something like that a number of years back when we were opposing sanctuary cities. And maybe that's the last time that I can recall that the board took a group stance on an issue. But I, I just think logistically, at town meeting, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Slagel, that the article will be presented by a member of the Planning Board and not a member of this board. Is that correct? We will not be in a signed
I believe, I believe that's correct. That's how it was done at the annual town meeting, I believe.
So it's not, I mean, I'm just kind of trying to avoid a logistical nightmare where one of the five of us, we've all spoken against it. We're not, we don't want to stand up and stall the meeting by not offering the motion. So that, but it wouldn't preclude, preclude any of us from getting up and stating our objection. But it's something if the board wants to do, we can, we can consider doing that. The timing, I think, is certainly an issue. It's tight window from now until December 7th. We have had the public hearing. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is a mailing going out to every household. Hopefully, by the end of this week, the mailing will go out and arrive in people's mailboxes next week with some information, is that correct?
That's correct. There's a mailing that's going out just informing people that the vote's happening and the, some information about the MBTA zoning and the requirements, just to try to make sure that we can have a quorum and so that the folks who were aware of it at town meeting are aware that we're having it go forward in December 7th.
Anybody else have thoughts on that? I don't want to speak for everybody. I don't want to speak for everybody, I'm not.
Again, I don't know if it's something that you want to consider putting on a board to consider for our next meeting or not, but I just thought I'd mention it where, again, we have spoken out as, I think, as a unified board, unless anyone's changed their mind.
Yeah, and I think it's a good point. I mean, obviously, I've stayed in my position. I am in opposition of the article, and I intend to vote against it when the time comes. I am also mindful of the precedent that we may set, right? That in the future, people could say, you know, geez, you guys took a stance on that one, and what's your feeling on this one? So I wonder if that sets a precedent. Maybe it's a good precedent, maybe it's a bad, I don't, you know...
Again, I just throw it out there.
It's a good suggestion.
And to think, to, you know, Mr. McDonald's point about this, you know, being a trade-off of senior housing, I think there's two totally different proposals. I don't think one, if, if we said, hey, let's do a home rule for senior housing, I think we're still subject to this MBTA one way or the other. So I don't, not that senior housing is a bad thing, but this is not an affordable housing type proposal in general.
It's not.
But the other thing I just wanted to mention on a, on a good note, I just thought I'd throw a quick shout out, being Veterans Day, you know, being Veterans Day and Veterans Month, just wanted to let the board know and the public know that Cub Scout Pack 136 and Troop 136 are gonna do a Christmas card signing at the Mason Hall on Saturday, November 16th, from 1:00, excuse me, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, basically writing Christmas cards and holiday cards for our veterans, and also doing a collection of both toiletries and usable items for veterans. And everything collected will be given to iPods for vets. So I just thought I'd give a quick shout out to the Scouts and to iPods for vets, if anybody's so inclined to make a donation to the Mason Hall, at the Mason Hall for that. It's Saturday, November 16th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Bendel, personal privilege, I just want a clarification of something. Mr. West stated something that I think needs clarification on. Is our mandate for the MBTA, Mr. West? I just don't want the town to be confused here. I just want you to understand that my effort was to exempt the town from the MBTA overlay district, okay? And replace it... With a special legislative act, where we overlaid the district over our chosen lots, and it was for the purpose of affordable senior housing. And it would be going into a community land trust, where that community land trust can get federal funds from HUD and other organizations. And so, just so that there's no confusion on that, Mr. West, that my whole motivation here was to completely exempt us from that MBTA and have something that actually is legitimate, highly probable, and beneficial to our seniors.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other announcements?
Yeah, Mr. Bendel, I want to, in line with Mr. West, the Veterans Day celebration was, again, top-notch. Lou, Mike, and Patty did an outstanding job. I also want to give a shout out to the Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy and the Methodist Church for hosting a breakfast for the veterans. It was well-attended. They had, I would say, about 100 people, veterans and caretakers that came. I want to also give a shout out to the Shoshine Elementary School, the kids that came, that it was, it was great to, the kids were lining up the front of the door, and the veterans would come in and give fist pumps as they came through. And then after they did poems, they each wrote a poem that they recited, they did a song. It was just, it was really great. And the, and the Boy Scouts were there, they presented the flags. And again, thanks to Lou for helping us to, you know, get the veterans together. So it was a, it was a great day, Veterans Day, you know, but just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Absolutely. Any other announcements? Hearing none, okay. Any new business this evening?
Yeah, new business or old business, I don't know what you want to refer to it, but in our pack it was something regarding the Casella trash for the blue trash barrels. I didn't know if it was going to be brought out under communications for those people that don't see this. So I don't know if you want to mention this, Mr. Slagel, but...
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra, for that. Do you mind just updating us? Yeah, if you don't, if you don't remember, Mr. Kyra did bring up a good question at the last meeting. We did get a response from Jamie McGoldy. If we could just provide folks with an update on that?
Absolutely. So after the request of Member Kyra regarding concerns about whether or not the replacement barrels were being provided the same size, Jamie McGoldy, who is our DPW director, reached out and said, regarding the question that arose regarding Casella delivering replacement barrels, which are smaller size than the originals, DPW is not aware that that is the case. Standard blue trash barrels are 64 gallons in size, and the standard green recycling barrels are 95 gallons. Although it's possible that the replacement barrels are a different mold, the volume of the trash barrel should still be 64 gallons. Just so folks know, Casella does offer mini barrels, which are approximately 35 gallons in size on a case-by-case basis. Generally speaking, those are for folks who have a hardship with the larger barrel. So if senior citizens an issue with a 64-gallon barrel, we do have a mini barrel that they can get. However, very few of those have been requested. So if any resident feels that they were issued an incorrect barrel, please reach out to DPW, and they can confirm that you got the proper barrel assigned to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I noticed that you gave us the OPR funding information. I want to thank you for that. It would be interesting to find out those that didn't receive funding as to why they didn't receive it, but I want to thank you for the list that you provided us.
I do believe several of those businesses didn't receive funding because they weren't open during COVID.
Oh, okay.
Which is one of the requirements that were...
And I didn't know if there was any more update on the removal of the OPM from SMMA.
We don't have any update on that, though.
Keep asking.
Thank you. Any other new business this evening? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to important dates. Mr. Slagel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Important dates coming up, on November 13th, we'll have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then on November 16th, we'll have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. From November 18th through the 22nd, we'll have curbside collection of yard waste. On November 19th, we'll have another meeting of the Wildwood School Building Committee. On November 20th, we'll have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 23rd, we'll have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We have our following, on the 25th of November, we'll have a select board meeting here at Town Hall in Room 9 at 7:00 PM. At that meeting, we will have the discussion of the local property tax policy with reference to classification for FY '25. November 27th, we'll have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 28th is Thanksgiving Day. Town offices will be closed. November 29th, town offices will also be closed. From December 2nd through December 6th, we'll have the curbside collection of yard waste. December 4th, we'll have another brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. On December 6th, we'll have the Festival of Trees at Villanova Hall on Middlesex Avenue from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The next day on December 7th, we'll have the Christmas tree lighting at Town Common at 4:00 PM. We'll also have on December 7th, the Festival of Trees at Villanova Hall from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And December 8th, we'll have the Festival of Trees at Villanova Hall from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Also on December 7th, we'll have the special town meeting at Wilmington High School Auditorium at 9:00 AM regarding the MBTA zoning and a couple of other fiscal matters. On December 8th, that following Sunday, we'll have a Holiday Social at the Hardinett Tavern from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And on December 12th, we'll have Santa's Workshop here in Town Hall, Room 9, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any dates we missed? I think we got them all. There's a lot of stuff going on, which is great. And finally, I salute the service. You know, I had the great honor of offering some remarks yesterday at the veterans ceremony on behalf of our board, which I was grateful to be the opportunity to do, and I just wanted to repeat one thing that I had mentioned during my remarks, and that was that unfortunately, we do live in a time where our country seems to be a bit divided as it relates to politics. So it was refreshing yesterday to be completely united in our support for veterans, and I think that that is something that I know all of us here are united in, and we're really grateful for all the veterans who have served, specifically the ones who reside in Wilmington and have resided in Wilmington, but all veterans, anybody who's been brave enough to sign up and wear the uniform. So it's tradition at this meeting, right after Veterans Day, that we don't single anybody out like we normally do at every single one of our meetings, but to thank all veterans who have been brave enough to serve, and I know a lot of you who have had family members who have served, and we're grateful for them as well. And so, as was mentioned by all my colleagues, we're super grateful for our Veterans Service Office. Lou, Patty, and Mike did a wonderful job yesterday in honoring veterans in its true Wilmington fashion with a huge, enormous crowd, which was excellent and a beautiful day. So once again, thank you to all those men and women who have served our great nation. And with that, we will...
Chair? Could I make a statement before recommendation?
Sure.
I just want everyone in Wilmington to understand what a fire danger we are in right now. I think the red flags are still up. Please, take a week or two off, see what happens. Don't light a fire outside. Spots can come, go too fast. With the wind and dry, dry conditions we have, it's dangerous out there. And with that, I'll ask a motion to end our meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor? It is unanimous. Good evening, thank you, everyone.
Good night.